Vice President Eliza here. Thank you for joining us. It is May 17th, Tuesday, our regular time to join you all and to give our updates on this COVID-19 Town Hall update. So we know the numbers are low and looking good, but there's still important updates to be given out. So have Dr. Jill Jim, Executive Director, Department of Navajo Health, and also Dell with our Epi team. So again, we're here and President is on the call, but he's also got some graduation and some commitments online as well. So he'll be joining us shortly here whenever he can squeeze in. But again, May 17th, thank you for joining us as we do. Let's open up in prayer and then I'll give my segment and then introduce Dr. Jill Jim. Yeah, Shaja, thank God. We thank you, Boney, God, that today is another day to bring news, good news. We pray and updates to the people of the land. We thank you for your provision, your protection, your healing, your solidarity, joining the people together, Lord. One mind, one accord to stay safe. And we just, we give you praise for that. And as we join today on this Town Hall update, may your wisdom be with us. May we extend that wisdom to the people, that the people of the land may be blessed. We thank you. Yes, Shaja, thank God, your preeminence and your provision is astounding. And we are thankful, we are grateful. Be with us on this call, be with our people, Lord, as they look to open up and recover safely, Lord, our economy, our stores, our businesses, our general feeling of being safe here in the land, Father, that this virus is still here. It is still, we still need to be cautious, Lord, but cautious but with not, not with any fear, Father. We give it his time. Be with us now in Jesus' name. Yeah, Shaja, thank God. Amen and amen. So thank you for joining us again. We do have some vital news to give to you. I'll open up firstly and then if Jonathan Nez does not show up here, our President, who's displayed exemplary and stellar leadership in this mitigating this virus here in this pandemic, then we'll go to Dr. Jill Jim here. So, but real quick news, the Food and Drug Administration on Tuesday authorized Pfizer Biointex COVID-19 booster shot for children ages five to 11. The booster dose is available to children five months after completing their primary series of two shots there. Normally, we give some general overarching state news, and in this case, Arizona does not have any new updates. And the reporting mechanism, the reporting process and how these states, Departments of Health have been reporting has been changed up a little bit. So we do have numbers, I guess, that are staggered and they're coming to us in a little bit less frequent mode. Total positive cases as of May 11th in the state of Arizona, in a state that's almost 7 million in population, 2,339,25. So there's quite a few positive cases in the state. Apache County, a little bit closer to home, 22,540. Navajo County, 38,394. Again, this is as of May 11th, just a few days ago. And Coconino County, 44,091. That's in the state of Arizona. Colorado, no new news to report, but their numbers are updated daily. So I guess as of yesterday, 1,411,558 in Colorado. As you know, Navajo Nation, we do own two sizable ranches in Colorado. So reporting for the benefit of our employees that are housed there on the ranch hands there at our Wolf Springs Ranch. New Mexico, Mexico Department of Health issues updated public health order. Under the order, masks are required in all healthcare facilities, nursing homes, community homes, and residential treatment centers. I can vouch for that. My father is in a rehab, rehabbing after sustaining a broken pelvis, and we have to have masks when we go visit and wear them all the time. And so the health facilities in New Mexico are observing that measure. It also still requires businesses open to the public and schools to report COVID-19 outbreaks. The only change from previous orders eliminating the mask mandate for correctional facilities. So there you have it, the latest from New Mexico. Total positive cases, 527,167. San Juan County, 40,977. And McKinley County, 26,021. There are the latest numbers in New Mexico, our eastern neighbor there, and also the counties that are in the Navajo Nation. Utah, Utah Governor Spencer Cox has tested positive for COVID-19, his office announced last Thursday. The governor took a test after developing a scratchy throat late Wednesday night, officials said in a statement. He plans to isolate for five days and wear a mask for 10 days. So prayers for Governor Spencer Cox. And I believe recently too, maybe three weeks ago or so, Lieutenant, Madam Lieutenant Governor DG Henderson had also tested positive. So I've seen some posts, she's back out and hitting the trail. So she's fully recovered. Cox said he's been vaccinated and boosted. "So far, I feel fine," he said in a statement, and our prayers are for his full recovery. And so he will bounce back. We prayerfully submit. San Juan County, oh wait, wait, Utah, the total positive cases in Utah, almost hitting the million mark. This is as of May 12th, 2022, 938,864 there. San Juan County, 4,004. And our own Utah Navajo Health System, 1,981. So there you have it. Those are the latest numbers in what the pandemic and the numbers look like all around us. In closing, increase your protection against COVID-19 and get boosted. If you're over 50 and have already been boosted, ask a healthcare provider if a second booster makes sense for you. So there you have it, the latest from Vice President Eliza here. That's my segment here. We do, we're also waiting for our President Jonathan Nez to get on the call with us. But we also have Dr. Va with us today. So we're going to hand it over to our health professionals. I know there's more information as this pandemic changes, there's new updates. CDC hands down a new update and new important information. But also here, what does the pandemic look like for us here? And so our own Dr. Jill Jim, who's also displayed stellar leadership in mitigating this virus here for the Navajo Nation. We appreciate her leadership and look forward to hearing from her every Tuesday morning. So Dr. Jill Jim, thank you again for all you do and have done, and continue to stay safe.
Thank you, Vice President Nadal, for all you do, and thank you for the updates. And I think that a couple of weeks ago, as we were having, we've been having these Town Halls, and I appreciate your leadership and President for offering this to the Navajo people all the time. And sometimes what you get on the news or social media is sometimes very different. And so I'm glad that you and President are inviting us because we monitor the Navajo Nation's COVID status all the time. And several of Dell or several of our, my colleagues, Dr. Va and Dell are on here every single week to share this information. So as you were talking about some cases that you identified with the governor and stuff, and it's quite real, COVID is still here. And so I think we're going to have to continue to do what we do and what we know is best. So I just wanted to commend you for that and just for your father's safe recovery as well. So.
Thank you, Dr. Jim.
And then today, I just wanted to share some of the latest guidelines that we issued out and on the Navajo Department of Health webpage. And in Public Health Order Number 20220406, and this was the May 11th, 2022, this is how we wrote the guidelines for this and wanted to provide this information. So there's nine pages, and I'm not going to sort through all of them, but I just wanted to show the public that there is a guideline for everything now that are those public health orders. And in those public health orders, we mentioned like restrictions on flea markets, tour businesses, youth programs, traditional ceremonies, churches, in-person meetings and trainings, outdoor recreation events, gyms, wellness centers, recreation facilities, graduation events, and sport attendance. And those are all things that we have limits on. But going forward, what we did is we established general guidelines to help the Navajo public understand what are some things that no matter what you do, if it's a public event, this is what, just some quick reminders on just encouraging people to get vaccinated, to make sure that you explain safety protocols. And still to this day, we recommend if you are sick and if you are need to be isolated or quarantined, that limiting exposures and attending events is still recommended, especially if you have COVID-like symptoms. And that's what some people often ask us is like, well, I don't know if I just have the flu or if I have the allergies or whatnot. So those COVID-like symptoms are still what we suggest to make sure you're familiar with those, and we all are. And then if you're waiting for a test result, continue to just wait until you're fully receive your results and making sure that it's negative. And then in any public event, what we're asking, if you're going to go to the fair this year, when they start happening, the practice of three Ws, wash your hands, wear your mask, follow the mask or accordance to what we have right now, indoor and outdoor mask are still required. And then just something that we never really thought of before, I mean, washing your hand and before COVID was important just to make sure that you don't get sick or you don't have any sort of bacteria, especially after changing your, changing a diaper or touching animals or taking care of someone sick. These are things that we normally did before, and we just want to do those quick reminders. And watching your distance again is still what we recommend. Getting your vaccine updated and then self-screening yourself is going to be very important. We don't really have a requirement for temperature checks, but we know that you can self-screen yourself for COVID symptoms before attending an event and making sure you stay home. And then having a plan in place, no matter where you are, if you're hosting an event or you're attending an event and there is someone that has COVID, just to make sure that you do report it for businesses and for schools and tribal programs, they're still reporting to the Health Command Center and then also making sure that the area gets properly disinfected and clean. Promoting a safe environment. So whatever, if you're attending church, like I said, you're at a school event or whatever, those situations are that you're still looking at making sure there's enough hygiene supplies, there are signs posted to alert people to practice their three Ws and also requiring staff to also self-screen any individuals that are at your events. It receives some sort of safety training and education related to COVID. And then another area that we kind of recommend is if your water system has been shut down for a very long and continue to make sure that it operates. Physical distancing is always important wherever you're at in the graduation line, when you're at the flea market or when you're attending a youth league or an adult summer league event this summer. I'm pretty sure those have started as well. Adjust seating to maintain distancing and households, make sure vendors are six feet apart. Also gathering outside as much as possible if the weather permits, if it's indoors, making sure that ventilation isn't, there is ventilation through the building, windows and doors are popped open, making sure that there is a good X-FAC system that's repaired and working. And then avoiding really enclosed areas is what we still recommend. So just being aware of your surroundings when you're out there, attending an event only, not under reservation, but while you're off the reservation, you might want to still consider those. And then cleaning frequently as well, as we mentioned through the pandemic. Making sure you have, you sanitize areas, you keep a log of it, especially if you're hosting a large event. And then things like microphones are things that you can kind of clean and disinfect on a regular basis. And then food and drinks are allowed in the areas that I mentioned now, like in in-person meetings, tents, wherever you're having an outdoor event, just making sure there's disposable items, limiting crowding as well as much as possible and following the Navajo Nation Food Handler Training and Food Service Permit as well. If you're using a tent and canopy for revival or any other event, making sure that there is proper ventilation that is being used as well. And then over making sure that everyone complies with the guidelines that I'm talking about. Then everything else, we used to have two or three pages regarding churches, it's not the case. Just making sure people are, have received safety and training and education for other houses of worship in the Navajo Nation, and then offering low-risk activities, outdoor sign-in, hybrid, online services are some options. And then for tour businesses, we recommend the same thing. A lot of this, they have to comply with their reopening plan with the Division of Economic Development and then also following all the other guidelines mentioned above. So this document is very useful if you have not seen it. And then we have a section for temporary food vendors. Same thing, making sure they're following regulations and protocols. And then as I scroll down, we're looking at outdoor recreation events, just making sure that you're avoiding grouping, you avoid grouping and you're dividing participants into smaller groups, especially if you're doing an event. And now that we have more leeway for that. The other thing that's also listed on here is rodeos, and this was included in the last Public Health Emergency Order in regards to outdoor recreation guidelines. They've always included rodeos, trail rides, and other events. So there's a 50-person capacity for that. Then indoor training, food are allowed, making sure you bring your own hand sanitizer if you can. But also the host should be responsible for a lot of this and making sure that masks and hand sanitizers are still accessible. Youth programming, also same guidelines that are mentioned above. Not a lot of changes from other areas. So as we move towards the next phase of the pandemic, there aren't a lot of changes. And I think when we look at traditional ceremonies, we've really haven't, we used to do public health messaging on this, but we actually have some guidelines in place just addressing the same thing with the family pods, adjusting ceremonies are strongly recommended outdoors, making sure that people aren't sick when they come to get a ceremony of any sort. And then properly having utensil, making sure there's food prepared for the ceremony, that people are not sick. And also if the food vendors are present, they follow the temporary food vendor section policy or recommendations. And then cleaning and disinfecting recommendation and popping the windows and doors as well. So. And then gyms, wellness centers, and recreation facilities, same thing, monitoring the capacity limits, posting signage, having hand sanitizers, limiting indoor or fitness or exercise classes as well if there isn't a lot of ventilation. Outdoor group fitness classes are encouraged, and then clients and employees should limit sharing items as well. And so those are just the typical guidelines. And we have holiday gatherings that are coming up. And the Fourth of July is one of them, Memorial Day is one of them. And the most important thing we try to encourage people to do is do outdoors. And if you have test kits available, use them. And then we also have masks that we continue to have provided to the chapters. So go to your local chapter house to get a mask, a K95 or an N95 mask. And those were provided through the FEMA and also the COVID test kits. You can call your local CCR office as well to get a COVID test kit. And so if you need to take precaution or either if you feel like you've attended a gathering where you put yourself at risk, those are options that you can do. But guidelines are here. And then, and one important thing is if you're hosting, making sure you're not sick, making sure other people are not sick as well. So sports event, same guidelines from before, but really different areas for schools and then graduation events. So there's probably many of them that are going on and indoor and outdoor graduation is allowed. So hopefully people are celebrating safely and that parents and graduates are having their gatherings in a safe manner. Another one is the fair guideline, event guideline is issued as well. So if you look on the Department of Health webpage, you'll have the different events that usually happen at the fairs. And these events include everything from camping to carnivals to parades to powwows, to rodeos, western dances, youth dances, pageants, mud bogging, everything that you see are mentioned in here as part of the fair guideline. And then the only thing that's very different from what I mentioned and is that the fair organizers are encouraged to conduct vaccine verification as well. And then all the basic guidelines that I have mentioned, I'm going to skip this whole area because it's everything that I already had talked about. Nothing different except for there are some items on spectator and general guidance here. And then there is an area at the bottom. If you are a fair coordinator or part of a committee, you would need to submit your reopening plan to the Division of Economic Development so that you can have your fair occurred this year. So those are just some of the long guidelines I just wanted to share. And sometimes maybe we don't spend time going on to the webpage to know more about these guidelines, but they're here, they still exist. We are still living with COVID. We still have to take a lot of precaution. And that means having accessible to activities safely on the Navajo Nation, and we can do that, and we have. So I encourage everyone to share the guidelines. And I'll stop there, Vice President. I don't see President on the call yet, so I think we can turn to Dr. Va. So Dr. Va, thank you for joining us. And then I think that can be followed by Dell. Dr. Va is with the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. So welcome.
We can hear you, Dr. Va. I hope you all can hear me. I'm going to go ahead and, trying to figure out our audio. Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Va. I'm with the OGG2. And here's our data as far as COVID numbers over two weeks. As I always do, I always try to acknowledge our knowledge of COVID. We are compile all the numbers, everything. Just to highlight some, all of the. On Navajo, it's. CDC. COPE. TGEN. Our partners from the State Department of Health. I always try to. And so therefore. What the data. These are our recent pieces of trends over. Still here, just going over the red line. Our numbers do fluctuate quite a bit every day by the bar. They go up and down. Very low, sometimes it's a little bit high. So, but the red line captures the trend over. As you can see, I'll mention this, this low period here was about. Cases over, I don't even know what, moving average over. Period back on late March, early May, early April. And then now we've been spending. Throughout, we are here at around 20, 20 cases. It's the highest we've been since late March or early April. So we are, you know, seeing a little bit of a upward trend over a month and a half or so, which kind of reflects our seven-day threshold being over. Our threshold is right at one. So we are. And then case incidence across Navajo Nation over here in the bottom. What do you mean cases? Over seven-day period from May 6th. well. That puts seven days three, that's seven cases per hundred thousand people. Which is in the orange uh level of our response, COVID response on the picture. And then on the map over here. Uh, Kianta and Chulay Service Area. Are the two with the highest seven day case uh rate range. Being over a hundred plus thousand, followed by forty five uh service areas. Which are in the fifty to ninety nine seventy three straight range around a thousand. And then the latter color here, two by ones in the top. All in the the lower seven day case range. Thousand. So that's kind of the picture and overall situation on the mission. Over seven day period. Additional match here, that base has capacity. We're at seven percent. Uh, seven day, seven day test positive. This also goes up, went up a little bit from six last week to seven. And then there are about, you know, testing is still going on across we're about four hundred eighty six average daily tests conducted over so there's a lot of testing still going on. And then core metric here is hospital capacity. Popular hospital beds is thirty three percent. And ICU beds seventy six percent. Average daily occupancy for 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 that on the nation. And then our latest numbers for vaccines or vaccinations on the nation. Uh, it's for Navajo Nation. We completed the primary series with the two doses. The first and second doses. Now at a hundred twenty five thousand seven hundred and then residents that are up to date, meaning that the third shot for the first booster. Um, eighty four thousand nine hundred four. So about sixty seven percent of our Navajo Nation have completed the primary series, forty five percent are up to date. These are epic curves for or the blue line is the class, the orange line is Navajo Nation. Uh, we are increasing cases. Um, I'd say probably with almost two months now. Uh, time period across the United States. Um, and we are Navajo Nation, we are still um also seeing a little bit of a uh up cases here. This is seven day case rate comparison between Navajo Nation and the fifty state. And a couple jurisdictions, the yellow bar here is Navajo Nation where forty position compared to the fifty. And then the red bars are uh border Colorado, Utah. Um, that's the seven day case rate uh picture. Here's a seven day case rate picture across the U S by states. And just within our region. Colorado, seen it up in well, uh Utah and Mexico. And Arizona with the lowest seven day case rate within our a lot of the COVID cases are over on the east coast, northeast coast of the nation, then up here in the north, the west uh section of the west. The west and north, uh west coast. Community transmission across the nation, I'll just focus on our in our region by counties, you know, in Arizona, Apache, Co- uh Navajo and Coconino counties all within the orange. But uh COVID transition. And New Mexico is McInnes County and uh San Juan County. Uh, in New Mexico with the orange and yellow with moderate and up in Utah, this um San Juan County in Utah is red, so high COVID in our region. This is uh from last week, COVID strain surveillance on Navajo Nation. Uh, we haven't updated this yet from last week, so uh the numbers uh remain the same from last week. Just that we are still see, we have detected uh the BA two in its sublinages on on the Navajo Nation. We went from twenty three to ten from last week. So that's the only, really the highlight uh of the latest numbers here. CDC variant profile across the U S and the BA two point twelve, point one. Did go up from forty three percent to now about forty eight. So the BA twelve one is on the upward trend across the U S. Uh, that's the the highlight of this um um variant profile for for the U United States. Five new chapters made to the highest capital list here. And Chulay Kanado Loop, Nashiti and Sali Wheat Fields. And then our risk level assessment here. Uh, as I mentioned, we continue to fluctuate as far as numbers. Last week we were yellow, now we're over an orange based on our seven day case rate. There was a plus thirty two percent change from last week. And we are an orange level, that's substantial COVID risk and transmission. As I mentioned, we've detected the both the BA two and the BA two twelve one on the Navajo Nation. Our lab test positivity uh continues, you know, will remain low even though it's going up a little bit, but it's still low and stable at now some percent. In our hospital capacity at uh in seventy six percent. And we are um in the orange level uh currently for cases and hospital capacity. And then the lab based testing is uh yellow, so. We're in the orange level and I'm going to stop here and go back to see if Dr. Va has fixed our audio. Dr. Va.
Hi, good morning.
There you go.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much, Dell. I appreciate the patience. Um, and to everyone out there, so sorry about the audio issues. Um, I am joining this call from Chulay Service Unit. Um, and I am joining on behalf of our IHS team. Um, some updates I would like to provide is that we do continue to work with our Navajo Nation partners, um such as my co-lead Dell Yazian and of course Dr. Jim. Um, and OPVP on our COVID nineteen response, focusing on COVID nineteen control activities. As Dr. Jim noted earlier in her talk, um is that we are at a different stage in our pandemic where we know what we can do um to prevent COVID nineteen, to prevent serious illness. Um, and what we can do to mitigate or to um lessen those risks as well as what we can do to prevent spread. And so that's what I'm gonna focus on today. Um, something I do want to highlight that, you know, our response at this time, what can, you know, what can we do to control COVID nineteen, right? We have vaccines and boosters, we have rapid tests, home tests. And we have treatment. Um, and we have an excellent team um that's made up of IHS, Navajo Nation partners to help with monitoring, monitoring and tracking um COVID nineteen. That helps inform all of those control measures. Um, and so a common question that we do get is testing. These home test kits, can we rely on them? The answer on that is yes. And so we, as a unified team, continue to try to make sure that there is accessible testing out there, that folks on the ground, communities on the ground can go to a facility and pick up a home test kit. Um, the home test kits are really effective at telling you, are you infected right now? Are you contagious right now? As Dell was saying, that yes, cases are going up and this latest version of Omicron or this latest version of this COVID nineteen virus is very, very contagious. Um, and so what can you do to help um mitigate that is test. Rapid tests, they work. So for example, if you're going to a gathering or if you are symptomatic, go ahead and test yourself with a home test kit. It'll tell you, are you infected right now? And so if it comes back positive, whether or not you're symptomatic, don't go to that gathering. If 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 you are symptomatic and comes back positive, guess what? We treat that as a true positive. All facilities across Navajo Nation treat a home test kit as a true positive. If you are positive and symptomatic, please call your nearest service facility or nearest healthcare facility because they can connect you to life-saving treatments. Um, we do have treatment available across Navajo Nation. Um, the the first line treatment for this current variant of Omicron um is Paxlovid, it is a pill. Um, and so if you are symptomatic, you tested positive, go ahead and call your nearest healthcare facility and they can connect you um to treatment if you are eligible. Um, and like I said, we currently have the pills, um we have Paxlovid. Um, and then if that is not the right medication for you, there are others such as IV infusions as well. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure that everybody on this call, joining us this morning, understands that. So don't hesitate to report your positive home test results. We treat that as a true positive. Um, the other thing I wanted to highlight is that we know that boosters work. You know, right now across Navajo Nation, we know that of all ages, zero on up, more than seventy percent have received at least one vaccine. Um, as Dell noted earlier, you know, close to seventy percent have completed their primary series and so they got two out of two doses of Moderna or two out of two doses of Pfizer or they got one out of one dose of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. We also know that about forty five, you know, about forty five percent or about close to half of those um all ages, zero on up are up to date. What that means is that you completed a primary series um and you got a booster when you're eligible. The data tells us that boosters work. Boosters prevent hospitalizations, they prevent severe illness. Um, with this current variant, we do understand that you know, that is very contagious um and that some may experience what we call a breakthrough infection. And what that means is that they were vaccinated and boosted, but they also happened to get COVID nineteen. That is expected. The purpose of these vaccines and boosters is to prevent serious illness and to prevent hospitalization. And so if you um haven't gotten vaccinated yet, please start that series, please go ahead and get a vaccine. We are recommending the Moderna or Pfizer vaccine. Under very certain circumstances, you might um need a Johnson and Johnson vaccine, but for the most part, we prefer um a Moderna or Pfizer vaccine. If you haven't completed your vaccine series yet, come back and complete it. And if you're eligible for a booster, please come back and get your booster. If you're fifty and older, you may be eligible at this point, actually fifty and older, you are eligible for a second booster. Um, and so please come back and get those boosters because we know those boosters help prevent um a huge increase in hospitalizations across the U S as well as here in Navajo Nation. Um, if you're symptomatic and you have a home test kit, please test yourself. If it's positive, please call your nearest facility because you are eligible for treatment. And we continue to work together to make sure that treatment is um is available across Navajo Nation. Um, and that is it's my update. Thank you very much. And have a wonderful day.